And you are live.
Okay, we're gonna open the Board of Selectmen meeting for Tuesday, September 5th, 2017, at 6:30. We stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, this is the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic, which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Okay, we don't have any resident public comments, so we'll move on to approve the warrants. I will read those. Motion to approve payroll warrant number 18-09 in the amount of $172,790.68.
I'll second that.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-07-02 in the amount of $843.57. Can I get a second, or a motion, a second, sorry?
I'll second that.
Second by Ed. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to approve bill warrant number 18-09 in the amount of $1,386,918.68.
I'll second that.
Second, any discussion?
Just, yeah, break that down first.
Yep, so, Kentucky's on there for just under $730,000. And then, we are making the transfers on this warrant that were approved through town meeting for stabilization, OPEB, and capital. So that totals $365,000. And the remaining $320,000 is for town, water, sewer, and light bills.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, moving on to discussion and possible vote. Acknowledge receipt of and review open meeting law complaint of Ann Brody, received August 21st, 2017, and a vote to resolve. On advice from counsel, this complaint involves emails that were sent between April 11th and April 23rd, 2017. Ms. Brody requested copies of those emails via public records. Request dated June 26th, 2017. The request was fulfilled on July 6th, 2017. I hereby acknowledge that this complaint was received by the beyond the 30-day filing requirement in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 23B. Therefore, I request a board member to make a motion that we send a letter to the Division of Open Government stating we decline to respond because we find this complaint to be untimely.
I'll make a motion to file.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on the motion only?
When was the, when was the violation?
It was the 11th.
April 11th to April 23rd. Any further discussion on the motion only?
Well, I have a question because the law-
Only discussion on the motion only. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
So there's no discussion, you're not, you're not-
Moving on.
Excuse me?
No. You're out of order. Moving on. We have the votes on the board. We have the minutes from August 7th, 2017.
Those look to be in order. A move for passage.
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
We have a one-day liquor license for a marriage celebration-
I'm sorry, Lisa, did you go on the minutes? No, I didn't. Do you want to be a extension or? Extension is fine.
One-day liquor license for a marriage celebration at B.C. Park on September 23rd, 2017, between the hours of 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM. Detail officer required on premise.
I'll make a motion that we accept the one-day liquor license for September 23rd between 12:00 PM and 4:00 PM for a wedding celebration. Detail officer required on the premises.
Can I get a second?
Looks like everybody's in general order.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? We have a special event permit for the Pine Speedway reunion, October 7th, 2017, 10:00 AM to 4:00 PM.
I'll make a motion to accept the, and give them the event permit.
I'll second that.
Further discussion?
Yes.
So I've noted insurance cert has not received as of yet, so it hasn't been received.
We have not, so I would request that the board make their motion pending-
Contingent?
Yes, please. They were just waiting to get it finalized and sent, so I should have it-
Bill, do you want-
I can't anticipate there being any draw, they're just, we want to, we want to make sure we-
Yeah, I'll just amend it, I'll amend it that the insurance is all in place.
Yes, please.
Any further discussion?
On the right-hand side.
All those in favor? Accept the resignation of Dan Stone from the zoning board of appeals.
May I just make a comment on that? So Dan apparently resigned several months ago. I put a copy of his email back in June. We were unaware of it until Casey asked me if we could fill their vacant spot, at which point I reached out and asked her to get us a copy of his resignation. So that's why it is just on your agenda now.
Anybody want to make a motion on that?
I'll make a motion to accept the resignation of Dan Stone on the zoning board, and I hope someone steps up and can fill the position.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion, Denise, where does that leave for number on the zoning board now?
There are four, they need one, and they have no alternate, so they, they really do need another full member.
Do you know, happen to know offhand how many open positions we have throughout the town?
Um, yeah, so I actually, there's something on the front page of our website. We have a Water and Sewer Commission vacancy. We have two Finance Committee spots. There's some on open space and trails, but I've seen some interest in those in the last few weeks. The zoning board, Planning Board alternate members, Affordable Housing Committee desperately needs people, we only have one person on there. The Cable Advisory Committee, we only have two people on there.
What was it again, the housing?
The Housing Authority, the Housing, Affordable Housing Committee.
So we really need some help.
Can I, can I, um, a select person be on that?
Yeah. Like I said, so I think that's a committee of five, we only have one.
Wow. That's not even really going to help.
So, that committee really, and same thing with the cable, so that there's not enough people to meet with the cable committee. But there is, it's right on the front page of our website, all of the vacancies that we have.
Yeah, if we can get some people to volunteer for some of these positions, I know it's time-consuming and it's, there's a lot of, everyone has a lot going on, but we really need some help filling some of these positions so we can get the business of the town done. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, moving to old business. Previous agenda items that the chair does not reasonably anticipate will be discussed. Ed, anything for old business?
The last meeting, we, I had asked about the town planner, and you were gonna put that, Denise was gonna put that out again. Do we have any update on it?
Nope, so it's been posted again. The normal time is 30 days, so it's posted on the Mass. Municipal website, our website, and the front message board. The position is listed, open until filled, and review of resumes will begin on September 25th. To date, I've not received any.
Anything else, Ed?
No.
Bill, done?
I have a couple. Number one, I would like to thank the people that come out, I believe it was last Saturday, and worked at the Bagnell School, spreading the woodchips, and I know there's a group of people that were painting the basketball courts and what have you. I think the project looked good. I think it's, you know, the people in the town should be able to be proud of it, and the people that come out to work should be proud of what they've done. And as far as I know, we only have one last thing over there to do, we do that, the little bit of hutopping that needs to be done. But I drove through after they finally finished the hot scotch painting in the basketball courts, and it really looks sharp out there.
I agree, that, I drove by there Saturday, and I think it was Monday afternoon, and the front looks amazing, the back looks amazing. The play area where they painted the designs and stentals looks great. Definitely a big thank you to all the volunteers and everyone who helped out on that project. A lot of people put in a lot of time and effort into that, and also, Bill, thank you for your time and your donation, some materials. Anything else?
Yeah. In the last meeting, we talked about the hutopping on that. Did you ever find out what they're gonna do?
I talked to Bob a little bit, and just, you know, we have to get out there and measure to see how far that money will go. So we haven't done that yet, but he and I did speak about the project and sort of how much money we have available. You're talking about, you're talking about the Bagnell, right?
No, the road, is it Governor's Road?
That was paved, right?
Governor's Road needs the top coat.
That's what I'm talking about.
Oh, you talked about the-
Yeah.
I'm assuming they'll do that when they start doing all the other roads. So Bob is putting together a list of the roads that will be impacted in the next phase of paving, because I believe it will be in the next month or two. So I'm assuming that's when they'll do the top coat on Governor's.
Okay. And there was one other thing we were gonna, last meeting, we were gonna look into, there was one other issue that we needed to get clarified, we were gonna ask someone something, there was Governor's, the bathrooms.
The bathrooms, they've done some work on, I know they were out there, the locksmith came out, they had to put some new handles and locks on. I know that was done, and now Bob is working on a, the plumbing equipment list, so that we can actually order all the parts.
Okay. There was one other thing, I don't remember. Anyway, I should have brought my paper from last meeting, I didn't.
I don't remember.
Anyway, it will come back. I guess that's good.
Bill's up?
Yeah.
Lisa?
Two things, I know that we had talked a little bit about personnel policy the last meeting, and sent the personnel policies forwarded to us. So the one thing that I was reviewing, the current personnel manual, and on page two it requires that there be a personal advisory committee or personal advisory group. So I don't think that we can make any changes to that manual without having that advisory group be in place. It says any changes to those policies have to go before town meeting.
So I will just say, somewhere along the line, many years ago, and I don't know what caused it, the town did away with the personal advisory group. Like I said, I don't know the meaning behind it, I just know as long as I've been here and several years before that, it has not been in existence. So I don't know, I'd have to look and see if they were involved the last time the selectman made changes to that policy.
So for me, it doesn't matter, if that's what, if that's what the policy says, that's what we need to abide by, if it wasn't voted on at town meeting. So I would respectfully say that even if it wasn't done that way in the past, that's the way, that's the proper way that it should be done, unless there's been a documented vote that that was changed.
Right, and that's what, I don't know, I don't know when it was abolished or why.
Okay. Secondly, I had requested to be placed on the agenda regarding the Ellen Park Committee. I'd like to request to be placed on the next agenda.
Yes, I, you were supposed to send me stuff to post on the agenda, though. So I don't have anything to add to the agenda for that item.
Well, it's just, I have all the information, and I couldn't easily put it to you.
Okay.
So my other, well, I can skip it.
Okay. So yes, I can certainly add you if you will send along the backup for the agenda.
Yeah, just a comment on that. Looking over the, looking over the town bylaw, I'm sorry, the Personnel Procedure Manual, is there anything, this was revised in '05, is there anything in the, in the new laws on medical insurance, et cetera, that, in retirement, that is out of date based on the new federal laws?
So the health insurance, the section, so it's, it's fairly vague in the Personnel Manual. The town adopted the GIC back, I want to say, seven years ago now. So that operates under a different chapter of the law, because that had to form a Public Employees Committee in order to do that. So that is not identified in here. Retirement wouldn't have changed anything in the policy. But there are things in here that are outdated, that have changed.
Yeah, I'm just reading over the medical coverage, I just want, medical insurance, I just wondered if there's anything changed, and, and some of the, the contracts that we've signed, maybe some of that stuff is out of date also. Some of the benefits that were given through the contracts are over what the Personnel Procedures Manual, Personnel Procedures Manual mentions in here.
But, so, contracted employees are exempt from the Personnel Policy Manual. They wouldn't follow this at all, it's, so that's the benefit, I guess, to unions negotiating, because they can have better benefits than what the non-union employees get.
Lisa, you know?
I'm on second.
Bill O'Neil? Yeah, I just want to kind of circle back around. Direct Committee, we haven't heard from them in a while. Have they, have they come together with any kind of plan, or have we heard anything back from them, or, you know, where they're going, what their vision is, are they, I know we talked about this maybe at the beginning, middle, summer, just want to, I want to make sure this doesn't die, you know, mercilessly death, that we stay on top of it, and we push this ball across the goal line once and for all.
I've heard from Mike Houghton, the Chair. We've communicated back and forth regarding the, the well and the project, so he and I have sort of talked about the next steps. I honestly don't know if the committee's involved or if they've been meeting. I just know that he's been keeping in touch with me.
Might we get them on the agenda sometime soon, just to find out where they're going and what their game plan is, so we know if there's any cracks to be filled in, or any, you know, holes to be plugged?
Yeah, I think the next agenda is looking pretty tight with the one I put out.
Down the road, you know, if it's time and a minute, that would be great, just to check base with them, just so they, nobody forgets that they have, we all have a mission. Jim Day, kind of similar circumstance, I know he kind of was looking to form a Bagnell Grounds Committee. Have we heard anything back from Mr. Day as far as, has he been able to find any people that, you know, would volunteer their time and efforts, and where's he going, what is he envision? I know it's probably been what it might have so roughly.
Yeah, I think he decided not to spearhead that.
He decided not to spearhead?
Yeah, but that's something that can be looked at, but I think he decided that he would not, that he would not be the one to-
Right, I think given his position as a teacher in the schools, he was determined to be too much of a-
But that's not, that's not saying that another parent could pick that up, who's not employed by the school, that he's going to head that.
How was that, what was that communication that he put to it?
I just heard from the superintendent, who said he had a conversation with him.
He called you or he emailed you?
He called me. I even heard from Jim directly. Off the top of my head, I don't know. It was right after that meeting.
Information will be communicated to us tomorrow?
Well, the Chair knew. We had talked about it.
I know a lot of the PTA people were involved over there when I was there. I think, from what I gathered, didn't have a conversation with anyone, but from what I gathered, it seemed like the PTA wanted to get involved, and they wanted to do a lot of the work.
Is there something else that I don't want to see?
Yeah, I agree.
We've done a lot of great work, you've done extraordinary job down there, Bill, just don't want to see your, all your labor done to us, or for not, you know, let's keep-
Is there any way, Mike, we can write them a letter or anything, and ask them if they're gonna spearhead it, and who's gonna take the ball with the maintenance end of it and all that?
Yeah, I can do that.
I think the maintenance end of it is, we hired the company to-
No, I mean, like, when they were in here talking about carrying on with it.
Yeah, they were talking about, I mean, Mr. Day was talking about, you know, funding it through sponsorships and-
That's what I'm getting at.
Things like that, running events, maybe, you know, whatever it took to kind of-
I think they were talking about putting money into it, to grow the money end of it, too.
Well, absolutely, it's got to be a self-sustaining fund, I mean-
Well, there was a whole proposal in place about how to do that, so the question would be if somebody's gonna take that on, would they then be using that proposal as well?
Yeah, basically, I don't want to see it kind of die.
We can ask.
Yeah. If there's anything, any of the fundraising and-
Yep.
Down the road, if they're gonna need maintenance money to keep it up.
Summer program wrap-up, did we plan on having Matt Cunha talk about how it went this year, and, you know, his overall finances for the, for the year, and just kind of wrap-up?
It didn't, but we can. If you'd like him to come in, I can certainly ask him.
Yeah, I'd like to hear from him, see how it went this year as opposed to last year. We made, there were a lot of changes, see how it affected overall enjoyment by the campus and revenues and things like that.
Okay.
And one last, on the Library Committee, Mr. Chairman, were you able to send that list of specific questions that they might be able to help us with?
I did. I sent it that night, and I invited them back for the 18th, is that the next meeting?
Yes.
Yeah, I invited them back to be part of the agenda on the 18th. I have not heard back from them.
Moving on to correspondence. We have the minutes from August 21st, 2017. We have a letter from the Finance Board regarding the Finance Director Denise Demkosky, which they asked me to read. Dear Honorable Board of Selectmen, we want you to know that you have an exceptional employee, Denise Demkosky, in your Finance Department. Her calm, patient manner was a great help to the Finance Board as we navigated, navigated our way through the budget process for the first time. At a time when divisiveness occurs too often and is much easier to criticize and to praise, Denise consistently modeled a positive, enthusiastic demeanor in her many dealings and interactions with our board. Denise attended all the meetings of the Finance Board to provide supporting documentation and to respond to questions that may arise. In addition, as the budget process commenced, Denise provided each member of the Finance Board with a thorough and comprehensive notebook, including all the town budgets, supporting documentation, and a comprehensive revenue forecast, carefully constructed and thoroughly explained and documented. Denise always responded to questions and emails from board members in a timely and professional manner. In addition, as an annual town meeting day approached, she took time out of her busy schedule to assist the board as we put together the Finance Board report to the annual town meeting. Benjamin Franklin said it best, "Well done is better than well said." Thus, this letter will never fully convey in words how impressed we are with the knowledge, professionalism, and work ethic of our Town Finance Director Denise Demkosky. We submit this letter to the Honorable Board of Selectmen in appreciation of our Town Finance Director Denise Demkosky. Further, we respectfully request that this letter be read aloud at the Board of Selectmen meeting and afterwards placed in the personnel file of Denise Demkosky. With grateful appreciation, the Groveland Finance Board. All signed. Well done, Denise. And then we have the sample personnel policies that Denise provided us, personnel policies that we can review as we look to rehash our own. And on to Finance Director's time.
I only have one item for you, and that is, there will be a brief 9/11 memorial service this coming Monday, September 11th, at 8:30 AM in front of the Center Fire Station. Opening remarks will begin promptly at 8:40, and again, it will just be a brief ceremony. And that is all I have.
Okay, moving on to Selectmen time. Bill O'Neil?
Sure. Volunteerism, I'll get back to volunteerism really quick, because I guess we've got a lot of open positions, and a lot of it is because, in my opinion, a lot of people who volunteer take a lot of guff for helping out, and it's just wrong. I mean, if you call Bob Dylan, if you can't lend a hand, just get out of the way. People, you know, rolling up their sleeves and doing the best they can, volunteering for a lot of these positions that help all our neighbors out, and, you know, don't be critical. Can't, you know, jump in, jump in the water, the water's great. You'll have a lot of fun volunteering and helping out everyone. It's, it's a lot easier than being critical of everyone else that's just trying to do their best to make things good. Schools, I want to remind everybody, school's open today. Please, please, please drive carefully. If you're gonna be late for work, do yourself a favor, call your boss, tell him you're gonna be five minutes late for work, it's better than spending 10 years for, in jail for vehicle homicide because you were in a rush. Little kids, they have a mind of their own, they're quick, they dart into streets, they don't often always listen to their moms and dads when they yell at them to, to slow down and stop, so please, 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 please be careful. It may be your child. And that's it for me, thank you.
Lisa?
Back in June, we had talked about having Dr. Malqueen come in and talk about the school building project, and that that was going to be placed on the agenda. Can I get a status update on that?
They're coming in on the 18th.
September 18th?
Actually, I'm not sure Dr. Malqueen is, the three school committee members are coming in to give a 30-minute presentation on the status of the high school project.
As an agenda item for a future meeting, I'd like to understand what the policy is for access in town council. And then, thirdly, I'd like to have an agenda item to discuss the recent meeting that was held with Lieutenant Gordon, and the process that went into determining that.
Anything else?
I'll second the sentiments from Selectmen O'Neil about the buses and the school being in session. Things are gonna be a little bit slower, it's gonna be more traffic, just pay attention to what you're doing on the road.
Bill, done?
Yeah. If it's okay through the Chair, I remember two things that I wanted to talk on to old business.
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to-
That's all right. The gazebo I see, got fixed, Denise, looks good. We're gonna have to probably somewhere down the road find money, it's gonna need paint soon, not that work, but the whole-
This week, this week it's scheduled to be painted.
Oh, good, I mean, the whole thing looks like it's, okay. So that looks really good. And the planner, did we get that advertised, the town planner? That's out, okay. All right, so now, kind of back onto what Bill just said, and I don't want to sound like a broken record, but if you take volunteerism in the town, and people watch the TV, and they see how this board acts, and what this board does, I don't blame them for not wanting to volunteer. It seems like every meeting we come to, we have a new policy, we have something coming up. We're not here to be proactive. We are people that have been voted by the town of Groveland people to do the work for the people. We should be proactive and do good things for the town people. I don't know what's going on, I've been sitting here since May, I don't see anything being productively done. I was criticized when I was the Chairman, because I was getting things done, and it was my personal agenda. But I'll tell you something right now, it is sad that this board cannot get together and get something done. I don't need to be critical, people know me, I say it the way it is, and I'm saying it the way it is. That's why volunteer, and this town is gonna keep dropping. So as a board, I ask that we get together, stop, let's all work together, and let's get something done for the- get something done for the people that voted us to be here. Thank you.
Ed?
I don't have anything.
Okay, so, we gotta, are we going to stay in this room, or are we going to the other room?
No, because Planning Board will come into this room, so we will go into the back room for the executive session.
So we've got a motion to end the meeting?
Yes, and in that motion, it should state we are not coming back to a public meeting, we will adjourn an executive session.
Do you want to take a stab at that motion?
I make a motion that we adjourn for executive session. We will not be returning to general session following the executive session.
Adam will adjourn at 6:59.
Can I get a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Um, sorry, Bill O'Neil?
Yes.
Lisa?
Mike Wood, yes, Bill Dunn?
Yes.
Ed? Roll call it?
Yes.
Yes.